So again, thanks to everybody for coming. CIP Budget Day. Counsel, thank you. Staff, thank you. Folks, thank you for coming. Look forward to a good briefing by staff. So with that, Ms. Mayor, this is yours? Yes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning. We'll start here with our agenda. Introduction, there are a couple of new materials that are at the table for you today. There's a follow-up memo with some of the questions that were asked on Tuesday, some answers, and a staff contact person. If you have any ongoing questions regarding these items, please feel free to reach out to those staff contacts for additional information. The only one I would draw your attention to is the question about the water usage and the impact on sewer fees. There is a supplemental memo on that particular topic from Jim Odine. This has been a question that's been asked several times over the years. We thought we had a solution for that with the separate metering through Iowa American Water. That was recently changed. So if there is an interest from the council, that is certainly something we would be willing as staff to look at over this year on what an actual long-term solution may be to that issue. So just some additional information on that topic, but please feel free to reach out if you have any other questions on that. And with that, we'll get into today's agenda. We'll have a brief overview of the capital program, the funding, our 23 infrastructure projects that are already underway, a look at the full six-year proposed program, some specific project highlights, and then obviously conclude with our timeline. So again, just where we are in our budget process. This is our second budget workshop on the CIP. Again, the next formal item that will be before you will be the public hearing for the max tax resolution, which is on February the first. And just to reiterate from Tuesday, our budget highlights, again, our team continues to stay focused on these budget development goals in both the development of the operating budget and the capital budget. This budget is aligned with the council goals, with the city administrator's work plan, and with the ARPA spending plan that was approved. It complies with all of the financial policies that you have set in place, and then probably most importantly, maintains our current tax levy rate of 1678. So no proposed property tax changes with this budget. Overall, budget up 2.7%, which is consistent with our tax-based growth there in the proposed budget of 242 million. All right, so going into the capital program, typically, if you are looking at any kind of financial best practice, it's going to define a capital project as a project that's over $5,000 and typically would have a useful life of at least five years. In Davenport, because our scope is a little bit larger, we define a capital project typically as something with a five-year useful life, but generally, the cost is about $50,000 or more. These are things that are likely appearing on your council agenda for approval. Many different funding sources work together to fund the entire portfolio, primarily the debt service levy, which is property taxes, local sales tax, road use tax. Some of our enterprise funds, which we covered on Tuesday, and then obviously grants and partnerships are becoming even more of a big part of how we fund our program. So we'll start things off here with the debt service fund. The levy amount for this has remained unchanged. It's $2.05 for $1,000 of taxable value. That equates to about $10.7 million annually. The modeling for this fund is done in very close partnership with PFM, our financial advisor. They do very complex modeling that both looks at our past bonding loads that we have, where we are currently, and then they give us good targets for the future so that we're able to map out the plan and fund it adequately. The levy has some pretty strict restrictions on it. They can only be used to pay for principal and interest payments. So I think many of you, and we've had these conversations, have asked, well, is there a way to access these funds in a different way? The answer to that, we're continuing to look at that, but the answer to that right now is no, that it can solely be used for principal and interest. The bond ratings, when we think about that and how important that those are for our city, the primary area of importance is really their connection to this particular fund. So if you think about this, kind of even in our personal lives, the main reason that we're pulling our credit is typically when we're looking to take out some type of a new debt. That works the same in our municipal finance world. So generally, every January or February, we get a new credit score or a new bond rating, and then we take those scores to the market and look for the best interest rates. Iowa code does limit how much debt a city can take out, and that's limited to 5% of our gross valuation. I have a slide coming up here that will show you how that has changed over the past and where we are right now, but happy to tell you that we have $180 million in capacity, so our margin is about 46.6%. So that has been improving over the years, and we're pretty happy with where that's at.
Mr. Jones?
So in the parentheses, the current debt, is that our max, where we would be at if we were maxed out with our debt?
Yes, the 180 million. So if we took out 180 million, then we would be max.
But then in parentheses, it says, so reads, city's current debt margin is 46.55%, and then parentheses, current debt is 53.45%. I got a little lost with that. What's the parentheses mean?
Yes, so our current debt, we're at 53.45% of what we can.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
The margin is 46.55%.
No, no, yeah. That's where I was lost, thank you.
Yep, that one gets a little confusing. All right, so our current cash as of the end of FY '22 is 21.2 million. We've mentioned this several times here over the last year. This fund continues to be very, very strong. We project that our cash at the end of '23 would be up to 24.4 million, somewhere in that range, which is still pretty conservative. And as we talked about last week, our debt burden, particularly from the 2010 area in kind of that era of our finances, continues to be one of these challenges that the bond rating agencies have talked with us about. They did not like how heavy that that was. So again, we've been working on ways to reduce that over time, and I think you'll see that on our performance slide coming up here. We've been working on these innovative funding strategies, and I think the best example, we appreciate the council's guidance on this, is Fire Station 3. With that particular project, we're able to fund 3 million of that with cash and then 8.4 million from a shorter-term issuance out of the debt service fund that will be paid off in about a year. So rather than paying 10 or 15 years of interest on that project, we'll be paying one year of interest. And now, I think the most exciting slide in the entire presentation, but that is me. We prepared this to share with our rating agencies here in just a couple of weeks. So if you look at the chart on the left, our outstanding GO bonds, back in just as recent as 2016, we were at 220 million. And then now, we've been slowly working our way down there. So a decent drop there. We expect our rating agencies to be happy with that and showing the right trend. And then the chart on the right is that debt load compared to our borrowing limit. So you can see again in 2016 that that 220 million put us at over 70% of our capacity, and then now back down to that 53 level. And then our cash balance here, again, very, very successful in this fund. For the current debt profile that we have, we believe that about 15 million is the right number. Again, that can fluctuate from year to year based on what our projections are, but that's why you'll see us bringing forward these things for you to consider about starting to spend these funds on these shorter-term issuances, because anything above the yellow bar is what we should be using to reinvest to buy down the total load. And then just a quick summary here for FY '24. We are projecting about a $3.5 million surplus in that budget. Conservative interest rates have been built in for the winter sale. So this is part of the reason why, when you see these surpluses, we want to leave those there just because there is sometimes volatility within the market, and we want to make sure that we have funds available to do that. We have extremely conservative assumptions that are built into our modeling with PFM, and some examples of those are, we only assume around 1% growth in both our property tax and our sales tax, which we know we've historically been doing better than that. And then again, we have slated 8.4 million to be paid off in FY '24 connected with the fire station. Any questions on debt service? All right. So local sales tax. A referendum was passed on this in 1988. 60% of these funds are transferred into the debt service fund, so those funds work as a pair. And then 40% of the funds that come in here are used specifically for capital investment. 1% is what's redistributed. The state did change their formula this year, so you may recall that in the past, the formula was a little bit of a mystery in how it was distributed to us. Now, they have changed that where they are distributing these in real time. So each month, we receive the actual allocation from the prior month. So we're still kind of working through that as staff. It's making our trends, obviously, look a little bit different. So we would like to see a full year of data and a full year of distributions before we come back to you on what that looks like. In '24, the revenues were projected to be about 17 million, and that's been the budgeted number since '23. Again, this fund, we've talked a lot about it over the last several years. It's high-performing. Revenues are generally always exceeding our estimates. We're very conservative within this fund as well, because as you know, we can't always predict consumer behavior. So we just want to make sure that we are budgeting enough, and then the other funds that come in can just be invested in one-time projects. Our reestimated for '23, so for your current year, is about 22.5 million. And then this is just a quick breakdown here of FY '24, the expenditures. You can see the largest part of that pie is in that non-departmental expenses category. That is because, again, the majority of this fund's money is transferred out to the debt service fund or to the capital program, and that's what the transfers out are included in that non-departmental expense category. So that's why you see that large piece of the pie. And then this is just more for information here. So again, shows the actual funds received compared to the budget. So we won't go over that, but you do have that just for reference material. And then lastly, on this, the fund balance has continued to do well. Most of that has been tied to the true-up payments that we have received each fall. So this fund is in a really good position, I think, to also start working in tandem with the debt service fund to start looking for different ways to fund our capital program. Any questions on local gas tax?
What's the limit we want there? Good balance of having, is it that 16 million? Or is it?
I think probably 10 to 12 would be adequate for our scope. Yep.
Always good to have one.
Yep. All right. Road use tax is our last fund to cover for the morning. This funding source was established by the state back in 1949, and about 20% of what's collected is distributed back to the cities based on a per capita allocation. Their revenues are designated for use only between the curbs, so really about maintaining and approving our street network and system. You may recall back in 2015, the state did approve a 10 cent per gallon increase. This produced about an additional 1.6 million. It's hovered around that for the last several years for annual investment, and that increase is reflected in the CIP. 24 expenditures. You can see here, we use these funds in a variety of ways, I would say primarily the light teal salaries and benefits. This funding source is used to fund our street maintenance division and then some of engineering in the capital management area. The fund revenue, again, this one has continued to be stable. You'll see that '22 had a little bit of a decrease. We talked about that when we presented the audit. The reason for that is because we had received additional funds in FY '21 that were tied to kind of some CARES Act money that flowed through the state to us. So FY '22, you'll see it returned basically to the 20 prior level. And then our fund balance, this has continued to grow too. You'll see that typically, if you can locate a really bad snow year, where we have been kind of hammered by Mother Nature, this will reflect here, because if we have a lot higher cost than planned within this road use tax fund and for plowing efforts, then typically, this is how we would fund that. So anywhere that you see major drops, it's typically tied to we had a lot more overtime than we were expecting, or we had to purchase a supplemental salt or something to that effect. '22, you see just that slight dip there. That was also in the audit packet. I believe road use tax decreased by about 180,000. And that was, again, because we had received some of that CARES Act money that we then programmed in '22 and spent it. So that's why that appears that way.
Yeah, just a question. Are we, do we get any percentage of automobile licensing taxes? And I ask that because electric cars, of course, aren't buying gas. So that doesn't come to us, but they are, have a fairly substantial licensing fee, which if we're getting part of that, then it's offsetting. But as they're more electric cars, I just, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think you raised a good question. I don't believe so, but we'll double-check that and let you know.
And the only thing I would add to that is I think a lot of states are wrestling with that exact fact, because state infrastructure is also funded through the same mechanism.
Well, they're getting it back in Iowa in the auto, in the
In the registration.
Registration, so hopefully, they can figure out how to feed that back to the cities. Because you're missing, they're getting it in Iowa, but it's not coming back, that piece not coming back.
Mr. Jones? So then I guess the answer is no, we don't. Can we just make that part of like our legislative agenda? Would that be appropriate, that'd be part of our legislative agenda? If we say, hey, we're noticing this trend?
People in Des Moines, can you please consider?
See him almost every day.
All right, and that concludes the funding for the capital program. Any questions before we turn it over to Clay?
How y'all doing today? Before we get into the capital projects here, I was just wondering, are we gonna get three designs from the company that's supposed to be designing our Main Street Landing? I mean, we paid them 750,000 for, to provide three unique plans, designs, and it seems like that's gone by the wayside.
So we can add an update on the follow-up memo that gives you a status update and what the contractor's scope is.
Okay. And since we don't have the violence interrupter, that 500,000 that's left money, where's that being redirected to?
So we haven't made a management decision on whether or not we will refill the position that the employee has accepted a new position on, but we can do that as part of an ARPA update.
Yeah, well, you know. And then to the $6 million for the Main Street Landing Park. I know that we got the money from the state, but we were supposed to vote whether the park was to go forward after we got the design package. I know everybody's real happy about getting the state money and yay, 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 but I mean, are we gonna follow what we said we were gonna do? Or are we just gonna toss that out the window and just do what we want to do?
So Mayor, I don't know if you want to cover that. The council did take several actions, including the submission of the grant, understanding that
Yeah, we said, yeah, go see if you can get the money. That doesn't mean we're gonna spend the money yet.
I'll let the mayor take that one.
So we asked the state for money, and we used other people's money to leverage to get that money. And the council was briefed on that, and we got it. If you are asking us to consider not accepting that, I think that's terribly irresponsible. That's my view.
Okay. Well, then, why do we bother sitting up here and saying we're gonna do this? And then when it's convenient or something's changed, we say?
Convenient? You were briefed on getting, applying for this grant.
Right.
If we didn't get it, then I would, this is just my view. I get your point. We got it. Nobody else in the state hardly got anything with other people's money, and we're not gonna use our money. We're using others' money. I don't know how to say that more directly.
No, I mean, I get the part that we're using other people's money, but, I mean.
I've said my piece.
Yeah.
Other council people want to weigh in. Unless there's consensus to relook at this, I would say, I would not advise that.
I would just think, oh, go ahead. No, I just think that, you know, we should close that loop there and have the council vote and say, yeah, we want that, or we don't want that.
Vote on accepting the money?
In my time on council, which is not as long as some other people's, I think, certainly Rick and Kyle have been on longer, when we vote on going for a grant, which this council passed, we don't, I've never, it's never been my experience that if we got it, like a fire, for a fire truck or something, and we vote on grants all the time, we did go back and say, well, we don't want that fire truck now. So we're not gonna, I've never, that's never been my experience. My understanding that if you, you can vote yes or no on a grant proposal, and that's certainly fine. But my experience is, if you vote on something, you're voting for it to go forward. So I don't understand why it would be different than, say, a fire truck or any other thing we can
In a level of understanding, when we approved, as a council, we approved to go for that state grant, that that state grant wasn't, here's free money. That state grant is, we pay a percentage of the money you're putting in. The money we're putting in was the $6 million that we committed through ARPA. There was an understanding. So when we approved to go for it, and then we received the grant, our commitment was the $6 million that we put in through ARPA. Now, as far as design and public input, we're going to go through that entire process over the next year of what it looks like, and the public's gonna have plenty of opportunity to provide input. But also, we're, the deal is also reliant upon the railroad merger, which we haven't found out about yet. But if all of those fall in line, we committed the ARPA dollars, the state commits the grant, the railroad merger goes through, and that money comes through from CP, right? The council committed to it when we went down that road. Personal opinion.
I believe at the time that we talked about the grant, I did ask the question, we're making decisions as we go to, let's check opportunities, let's check it out. And I did ask the question, at what point in this process can we still have a vote on whether the project itself would go forward or not? And I did not receive a clear answer of a go, no-go point in this process when I asked that question. So I can see Derek's point in this, and I can also see yours in that, you know, we vote, we vote, we vote, and we suddenly have money.
Depending on the merger, on how much.
But there really was no clear go, no-go on this project, in my opinion, and I asked for that information, and it wasn't clear. So I'm just saying.
Done?
Just to be clear, when they bring this project forward, they act as all of say, this design is what we're doing. We're gonna vote on it. We, as a council, will vote on it. If
The design.
The design, and the approved to go ahead and do the project, correct?
Correct.
So that will be, you know, this isn't, we'll have a chance to vote, and that's all.
Okay, well, that's fine. That sounded, that answered my question. There you go.
Thanks for bringing it up. Cool.
From my perspective, when I'm approaching a budget this big, quality of life and cultural amenities are the easiest things to poke at as frivolous, because there's other things in here where I literally have to make a phone call to understand what it is that I'm looking at. But it doesn't make them any less important. And to continue to approach quality of life and cultural amenities that we fought for for decades and now have the support of the state to pay for in a way that we never would have been capable of doing, would do the city a huge disservice. The process is gonna give us an opportunity, critique it, to critique it and make it better and make sure that we deliver something that isn't foolhardy. But that's not what's going on right now. It's just the most approachable thing on the budget to pick at, in my opinion.
I'm gonna stop the conversation and ask them to move on, because I think, Mr. Cornet, you got your answer. There will be opportunities to discuss this future. I think Ms. Lee, his point of asking for that previously is valid, and I think that's going to happen. Fair? Okay, carry on.
So good morning, everyone. So normally, we jump straight into the fiscal year '24 proposed plan, but wanted to take a moment and talk about some of the currently funded projects. So on an annual basis, the city has a rather robust capital plan for that year. However, with some key signature projects that you have already funded with the inclusion of some targeted state and federal grant opportunities, the potential of the upcoming CP and Kansas City railroad merger, as well as the ARPA spending plan, in my opinion, I think you're going to see over the next year, you know, one to three years, historic levels of investment into our community. And even though a lot of this you've already voted on in previous budgets, some of these are coming online since '24 plus, I think it's worthwhile to take a look at it, because this is the first calendar year that you're actually going to see some of those investments take shape on a large scale. So I thought it'd be worthwhile to take a look. So just gonna run through some slides. What you'll see here in tables is existing projects that you have already provided funding for or approval on. We have them kind of categorized based on your categories, so they kind of follow the same as your normal CIP process, so by bridges, facilities, streets, et cetera. You'll see the project, a rounded budgetary figure, and then the current status of the existing project. existing project. I'm not gonna touch, talk about all of these. Doubt anyone wants to be here till 6 o'clock at night, but I'm just gonna touch on just a handful, if you will. First one, from a facility maintenance standpoint, obviously, we've talked about Fire Station Number Three. Anyone that drives on Brady Street north of Kimberly, you see the progress going on a daily basis. That's been fantastic to see. We've had a really mild winter, which has been great for construction, so I think there's only been one week where we've actually had to stop work. Our contractor is doing a fantastic job, but it's worthwhile to note that, you know, we still have another 11 months of construction to go. So that will be a time-intensive project. Chief has been intimately involved, so every two weeks, we're out there having a meeting, and it's going really well. The second project on this list I'd like to touch base on is Fairmount Community Center. So this is an ARPA-funded project. Just yesterday, received 90% plans from our architect for review, so you'll actually see the public hearing come in front of you, I believe, February 15th, so that we can, you know, move forward to getting a bid out. It's a good time of year for a project like this to be bid, and so we'll start with a spring construction schedule. The, no, yes, sir?
I just wanna add, Mr. Mayor, to Fire Station Three, if I may. A couple folks have said, well, you know, build a new fire station, that's nice, but I tried to articulate to them, this is also a community center. It has been talked about ever since we had a community involvement accreditation review years ago about the status of the fire station at Harrison and 35th, and the wear and tear we put, and then response times. This plays to all that and answers all that question. So some folks say, well, you're just building a new fire station, which is great, but this is so much more than just that. It answers so many more of the concerns, especially response times, and to take one station that's seriously in need of maintenance and putting a new one that will help the community in so many ways, I just wanted to take a moment to add. Thank you.
Wonderful said. The next set of projects you'll see, you know, Alderman, I mean Alderman Grip mentioned Tuesday about the need to do, you know, deferred maintenance on our city assets. If you don't do those, then down the road, you will pay for them, and you'll probably pay for them times four. So we're just making sure that we take care of our assets that allow us to provide the core services that we provide our residents. So a number of them, you know, roof replacements, water mitigation. Next, we're gonna talk a little bit about fleet. So at the very bottom of this table, you'll see the 100-foot aerial truck, so $1.3 million, that is on order. Then next slide, you'll see, then we have another fire engine. So last fall, you approved a $750 purchase of a fire engine, and then you can kind of see below fleet and facilities, those things we don't often talk about, they operate in the background, but they allow us to provide the services that we provide. You know, you see 12 police interceptors on order, you see asphalt pavers, you see mowers for our golf courses and our park system to allow them to continue to look beautiful, because these are the things that staff uses to provide, just letting you know that these things are on order. I do wanna give a shout out to our fleet manager, Jim Irwin, who is here. So obviously, the last few years, you know, the global supply chain, when it comes to the acquisition of vehicles, has been a little difficult, so big kudos to Jim and his team. They've been very strategic with those purchases to make sure that we are getting in line as soon as the line opens up, so that we can get our vehicles as fast as we possibly can. Yes, sir?
On these, like, for example, solid waste loaders, police interceptors, it says order, is that, are we locked in at those prices? Because I know a lot of things with the supply thing, as things take longer, these costs generally go higher. That won't jeopardize, like, the cost went way higher, now we gotta lose one of the three that we were hoping on it. Are these prices pretty solid as far as, even though they're gonna take two extra months to get, we're still at the same basic price for them all?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Moving through, so the CIP normally funds a number of programs, demolition, urban revitalization, we'll talk about those as part of the '24 budget. One of the things on this slide I want to talk to you about is our multimodal. So Goose Creek Trail Phase Two, we were able, we've had a federal grant for that one. Construction started last fall, it's gonna go into the spring and into the summer. That is what's gonna safely get, allow access to go underneath 53rd Street, and then eventually connect up to another project you see there, it's VNP Trail Extension. So you'll get up on the east side of Brady, that's gonna allow you to go all the way up to the Veterans Memorial Parkway Trail. Another project, Goose Creek Trail Phase Three, that's the $4 million project, that is the trail project that you approved as part of the ARPA spending plan, and that's what gets you safely underneath Kimberly. That will then connect to, naturally, the Phase Three project. That in particular is going through design, and is gonna be ready, is on schedule to be bid later this winter. Because it's right next to a creek, there's a number of permits that need to occur, but that project is moving forward.
Mr. Grip?
Well, very exciting with the multimodal stuff. The East Village lighting upgrades, I see that there's an asterisk there, and you've got an asterisk on like three or four of the projects, but it doesn't say what it means.
Okay, so an asterisk, thank you. I was gonna, I was gonna get that with the sewers, but you beat me to it. Asterisk means that it received, that particular project received some additional funding as part of the fiscal year '24 budget. So for this one, in particular, we're looking at upgrading and replacing all of the lighting in the East Village with pricing being what it is. Currently, we need a little bit more money in order to complete that project, and so that's where you see that asterisk.
And then I've got one, and I don't, it's not totally related, but since I don't see it, I'm going to ask, and you can give us the answer later, but I can't go another summer without the fountain at Vanderweer working. So can we get an update on where that's at and what it's gonna take to fix it? Thanks.
We will get you an update.
Mr. Martin?
And maybe you know Mayor, is that 5.8 for the Goose Creek Trail, is that, I know we approve money in ByState, is that, that money there, or is that different money?
So, the, of the 1.8 for Phase Two, about 1.2 of it is through ByState. It's called a, it's a little, a little wonky here, little, it's the Trail Set Aside Program that runs through ByState. That's a grant we were able to receive. The $4 million for the Phase Three, that was part of the ARPA spending plan, so that was, that was approved by you as the city council.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You answered yes.
Yeah, I just, actually, I remember the 5.8, I was just making sure that's what it was.
Good segue, Alderman Grip, to parks. So within your currently funded CIP as well as the ARPA spending plan, we have a significant amount of investment occurring in our quality of life amenities. Most of those, we've all talked about before, so you can see those listed. So we have some, some really big projects that Chad and his team is working on. A lot of these are gonna be moving into construction this year. Next, Riverfront, so you've all kind of already had some discussion about, you know, us being able to have that Destination Iowa grant opportunity. So I'll just kind of roll, so that in and of itself is a 20-plus million dollar project. The next set of Riverfront projects I'd like to touch base on is, so Flood at River at Third and Fourth, so I'll back up a little bit and say, in late November of '21, council approved the Flood Resiliency Plan. Chief among the, of what was in those recommendations was structural repairs to the system, and so staff immediately started moving forward on a number of the projects. The River at Third and Fourth is the storm sewer improvements that you all provided funding through the ARPA spending plan. Though that design is moving forward, we just met as a team recently at 50% plans, so we are on schedule to be, to be ready to have a bid set in probably late summer, early fall, so we're gonna start construction on that project this year. Likewise, River and Marquette, so this is another storm sewer improvement project. This is an interesting one. So Congress recently, like, as of two years ago, reopened the earmark process. And so we worked with our federal delegation, it's Congresswoman Miller Meeks and her staff, we submitted this particular project. Thankfully, like, you know, she had worked with us, and she chose it on her behalf and submitted it for the federal appropriations process. Nevertheless, 15 steps later, it was interesting to watch, actually get attached to a federal appropriations bill, but it was nice to see that our project was approved. So about 1.25 million is now coming to the city for this particular project, and we actually initiated design, so it's actually tracking on the same progress as Third and Fourth at River. So we're looking to get ready to bid both projects in late, late summer, early fall, and get those things underway. And those were two of the key takeaways or priorities from the Flood Resiliency Plan, so it's really exciting that we're able to kind of start progress on that so quickly. The next set of projects, we're gonna talk about a sanitary sewer. Once again, got an asterisk right there on Duck Creek Interceptor, in total, about a $22 million project. It will receive about $1 million in the '24 budget, but this is another really important, really critical project that we have going on, that you all approved, the vast majority of which is through the ARPA spending plan. And this is probably like two months left of design, and we're currently discussing with property owners for easements for the sanitary sewer to go through. Once that's underway, I imagine we'll be bidding that in the next three to four months. And that'll be a two-plus-year construction project. Moving, moving forward, you can still see that we have a number of sanitary and storm sewer projects of all various dollar figures that will be both planning and most of which we're going into construction this year. We hit streets, so the only two I wanna talk about here, and then we'll talk more in detail about streets as part of the '24 budget, is East 53rd Phase Two. So this is, you know, a $9.2 million project. I know half, or if not everyone at that table is probably gonna be really excited, because this is the last year of construction on the 53rd Street project, so a really important one for our community as we move forward. The second project is Russell Development, so 83rd to Zenith. I only picked that one out because we've been really fortunate with a number of development that's been occurring within our city, and just, this is a great example of staff working with the economic development team. So this particular $1.8 million project is paid for combination through a development agreement with, so the developer is paying for a portion of it, the other portion is coming through state funds. So in essence, no cost at the city for developing this particular project, but we, as a city, will be inspecting it, ensuring that everything meets our specifications prior to us taking it over. So just an example, projects come in at different times of the year, and we wanna make sure we remain nimble that we can continue to meet those needs. Nevertheless, you'll still see a number of street projects that are currently funded already, that it's gonna be set to go this year. We have a number of traffic studies on here, so this is both Harrison and Brady Study, the Veterans Memorial Parkway and Highway 61 Study, we have traffic calming, and once again, that's another one we'll talk about as part of the '24 process. The last slide is water pollution control. So flood mitigation Phase One is about a $12.5 million project, so this is where we were able to get about a $9.8 million grant through the federal government. Once again, kind of, everything's kind of going on the same timeline here. About two months left of design is left on this particular project before it goes out to bid, so late this winter, early spring, you'll actually see a public hearing for plans and specifications come before you, and so we can start moving into construction this year. Phase Two is something that we've already started to move forward with from a design perspective, because it makes us more competitive when it comes to seeking out state and federal grants, so we wanna make sure that we're constantly putting our best foot forward so we can continue to move this project along as fast as possible. Yes, sir?
I just wanna add, you know, years ago, and for decades and decades, people would say, do something about flooding, do something about flooding. Again, you heard my speech, I'm gonna try not to say too much here. 1965, kind of the standard, and my father would, and his folks would always say, ever since then, we talk about flooding, but we don't do anything. I appreciate, and I wanna thank the previous council and this council and the staff for actually taking it, not kicking the can down the road, and doing something about it, and then a thanks to our state and federal partners who realize this is a big deal for us and have put money. I mean, to get in the omnibus bill and to have the President of the United States sign a bill which has Davenport's pieces to it in multiple places is pretty significant, so thank you very much, everyone that works. This is the current program and what we're doing now, and people talk about, I just had a gentleman say, we got too many barricades, and I have to move around the barricades. I say, thanks for paying attention. Wait till next year, so please be patient. Thank you.
So going into having to move around barricades, I would say, yes, it's one thing we're gonna ask people to be patient on. So just this list of projects that, once again, have already been approved, it's 120, about $120 million worth of investment that's gonna go into our community, and that's before we talk about the $49.5 million that's coming up in the proposed '24 plan. So that's why I wanted to take, just take a moment to go over this book of work, because, I mean, there's some truly transformative projects that are in here. So in the next, one to three years, that our community is gonna see at, quite frankly, a historic level. So this would be my 10th year with the city, and I would say, probably in that 10 years, I can think of three projects offhand that are single projects that are greater than $9 million. This summer, you're gonna have four of, four of those going on at the same time. Fast forward 12 months later, you're gonna have two more come online, so you're gonna have six projects of that size, two of which are gonna be nearing $20 million just themselves. So the scale is increasing, the quantity is increasing, it's really exciting from a staff perspective at what we're able to do, and in addition to all that, we're still gonna go for more, because there are state and federal opportunities, and if we have a set of projects that's in our portfolio, and we can leverage our resources to get those things accomplished, we're gonna go for them. So you see a small list of what we're actually going for now. So the Safe Streets for All, the $7.3 million, that has bridge reconstruction involved in that one, along with some multimodal trails. South Concord Bridge over CP, you are all aware of that one. That one we have applied for, same with rail crossings, water pollution control, flood mitigation Phase Two, like, so once again, we've started the design, we're already going for construction funding. The one big one I do wanna address is the RAISE Grant, which is flood mitigation. So RAISE Grant is the US DOT's largest discretionary funding program that they have. It's been known, you know, over the years as a number of different acronyms, different administrations call it different things. Last year was the first year that we applied for flood mitigation, and this is from a deep, from a transportation perspective. And we actually made it as far as we ever have before, we actually made it to the Secretary of Transportation's desk. Unfortunately, ours wasn't a project that was selected, but we learned a lot through that process, and we, now we're contracted with HR Green, they're gonna help us walk through some of the items that we think we can make improvements to, and so we're actually preparing our next round. It's an $18 million project, so huge, huge thing that advances a lot of what the Flood Resiliency Plan looks to perform, and if we can get that, I mean, that's advancing stuff 10-plus years if we're able to be able to get that grant, and you're actually gonna see that in the form of a resolution approving a grant application in the next month.
Mr. Grip?
So we have applied for a lot of RAISE grants, build grants, TICR grants, every, every two years, they change the name. We haven't gotten one, but we are going to get one at some point. I hope this is the one, because the flooding issue is one that's important.
One of the things we've improved the most at in the last eight years is going out and actively pursuing grants, state, federal, other people's money. Clay, you deserve a lot of that. It's good, because we do wanna bring the money that's out there that we pay in taxes to the state and the federal government, we wanna make sure that we're getting some of that back in our community. But this is to Alderman Dunn's point when we were discussing Main Street Landing, every time we get one of these state or federal grants, that makes some room in our capital budget. And I, I talked with Rick this week, most boring capital budget we've had from, from a CIP, $49 million perspective. Boring, but think of all the stuff we took out of that budget, dealt with via ARPA, and now you do all that routine stuff that you need to do, replace the fire trucks, replace the fleet at Public Works, all that stuff, that's all that's in this year's CIP budget. So we've gotta continue to be aggressive in seeking out other people's money.
Ms. Lee?
I would like to thank some city staff for some things that are on here. They're not real sexy, they're not real big, but I think that they can be transformative in their own way, and one of them is the Veterans Memorial Parkway Brady Study. Thank you. That money is in. So, yeah, so that's great, because that's a mess up there in the design, so if we can get that fixed, that's wonderful. The other one is the Comprehensive Watershed Program Plan. That's another one where we can start managing our storm water, not on a development-by-development basis, but on a broader basement, basis, the way this water actually flows and collects. So I think that's another big one, and I hope that some of these, for the RAISE flood mitigation and some of these others, that we can use the environmental resolution and support of those grant applications, because that does mention flooding as well. So city council has supported the environmental, and hopefully that will help support the grants. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn? Just, this looks great, fantastic, a lot of good work. I just have one simple request. You know, we talked about flooding issues and fixing the flooding issues and we're doing that, right? Can we change the category so it doesn't say riverfront, it's just flooding, or, you know? Because when somebody looks at that, they go, oh, riverfront, you're spending another $10 million on a riverfront. It's actually for flooding, for the, and other projects. Because, I mean, it just, you know, that way it brings attention to that, we're working on this, flooding is a big issue. And, you know, somebody could pick this up and go, oh, flooding, look there, that's what they're doing. One other question I have on your projects, Mississippi Locust Street Alley?
Yes.
$450,000?
Yes.
Is that, what's that?
So that is, so previously, we have been using some kind of strategic, different style funding sources for alleys, or we've been trying to. One of the things, one of the thoughts was, we could use, worked with Bruce's team and use CDBG to help fund that particular project. It didn't work out in that scenario, however, we did get a design currently done. It is in a low to moderate income area. And part of last year's discussions, we had some extra general fund left over and some of that spend down plan was to perform alley repair, alley replacement in low to moderate income areas. And this particular one is, is what we're using that funding source for.
Okay.
Well, we're paused, I'll take my opportunity to offer my personal sentiment of praise. When I first got elected, you have all these ideas about where you want to go and then you quickly gained an appreciation of where we come from and what we're working with. I gained a lot of admiration for the way that you guys were hitting singles and doubles to get this city where it needs to go. Or maybe one we can all relate to more is like we're Iowa Hawkeyes and we don't have an offense, but we're going to win games through defense. But, um, then we got into COVID and you don't learn that in a textbook and the way that the city navigated that, I think we were ahead of our peers. And now, after hitting singles and doubles for so long, we've been thrust all this cash and it takes just as much talent to be able to move at that speed and execute things when you're flush as it does when you're being conservative and trying to hit the gaps. So it's a tall order ahead of us to execute all of this. But I can't, looking back, I probably didn't put enough emphasis on the importance of how quickly you guys aligned all that money with the projects that we needed to get on track and, and ready to move forward to spend effectively. So my admiration for you just continues to grow because now we're moving full speed, at an accelerated speed. And, and your, the chart you've, the course you've put us on is, it, it looks like it's going to be a really effective one moving forward. So thank you for adapting with the times so effectively.
I just want to add, I want to thank, many years ago, no, I've been doing this a while, some of the grants, some of the opportunities, many of the other partners at different levels, state and federal, wouldn't, in my opinion, have much interaction with us, either face to face or on video, in feedback and assisting us with how to get some of this stuff. In my opinion, that's changed hugely because of the trust of the staff, trust of the folks in this city, whether it's at the state level, getting, you know, a record number of funding or the federal level, writing in specific stuff for Davenport because of the trust we have on what we use it for and what we do. And the, and the, quite frankly, the articulate, well thought out and detailed application process that we provide. I've been privileged to witness some of these discussions, both at the Secretary of Transportation level and others, where they engage us purposely so they can learn how we did stuff. So that transformative way of doing business is now starting to pay off in us getting a lot of money that we would not have got before. So thank you.
There's not any more questions? We'll jump straight into the, the proposed fiscal year 24 budget. So the highlights for this one, I don't, I have a little disagreement with Alderman Gripp here about calling it boring. But, you know, we all have our opinions. First highlight, we have significant investment into the repair and reconstruction of city streets. So you got about $9.3 million in grant funded projects, about $9.9 million for maintenance programs. So that's, you know, $18, $19 million set aside specifically for streets. I mean, that is a very, very large number. We have continued investment into city assets that are critical for the delivery of our core services, so about $7.5 million for vehicles and equipment. I will, you know, you'll see that number there, that is a lot, is larger than normal and that's specifically because of the electric bus grant that we went after, were able to get, so that's about $5 million, that was just right there. And then lastly, funding for ongoing modernization of our sewer system, so about $7 million in investment in our sewer system. So the CIP is a six-year program, or six-year plan, rather. Year one, and we, is the only year that receives funding, so each year as part of this budget process, we always revisit it. However, we like to, years two through six, so fiscal year 25 through fiscal year 29, is just a plan so that our community, our community can kind of see, you know, where we're marching forward, you know, from a long-term perspective. Fiscal year 24 has about $49.5 million in its proposed budget. And then across the full six years, you have $234 million. Next is to look specifically at year one, so fiscal year 24 and how that, and how the category shape it. You can see there is about 40% of the budget is our street network, or rather, our street category. And then likewise, our sanitary sewer system is at 14. So just in our two core categories there, you're well over half of our budget is spent in street sewers. Yes, sir.
I just want to emphasize that, in the community survey and other times when people ask, CIP budget, street sewers and public safety are the three by far majority pieces of that, in case anybody's listening.
The next sets of tables, we'll kind of look at the same information, but look at it differently. First is from that project category standpoint, so you can see, you know, facility maintenance, is it about 2.8 million? There's bleed at the 7.5. As we kind of walk ourselves down, sanitary sewers, right at 7 million, streets, 19.3 million. So once again, that really large number. The next chart shows the same thing. I like this one in particular because, oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just for clarification, the riverfront is the flood stuff, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
We will make that change. The next chart shows the same information, it's one I like because it's by funding source. So obviously, as Mallory and Corey have talked about through the budgeting process, we fund these projects through different measures. And so you can kind of see the different funding sources and as they appear in the 24 budget. So bonds debated by the sewer fund at $7 million, federal and state grants at 14.4. So once again, a good large number. Our general obligation bonds, as we've talked about debt today, is at 18 million. And then local sales tax is a little over $4 million. I think from a, from a expense standpoint, which is what I am, get to do, it's great to see that number back up. I know once COVID hit, it was a lot lower as expectations for that were coming in. So it's, it's good to see that back at its normal amount. Next is, we typically show the difference between the current year budget 23 and the upcoming proposed budget 24. I will say that there are discrepancies. These are all largely due to either the timing of state or federal grants or one-time specific projects that were specifically slated. So you can kind of see the difference there, but typically, they generally hover right around where they normally are. And then lastly, as we continue to look at our high level before jumping into the individual projects, we always like to show this particular slide. When we talk streets, we break it down into two separate categories. There's the grant and special projects, these will fluctuate over time, and that is the timing of grants. So just because we are able to get one, we typically show it in our budget is when we're able to actually receive it. So obviously, the city and the, the feds fiscal year differ, but sometimes we're able to actually get grants that are available here and now, or sometimes we get grants that may be three years out before we can receive them, but we have them locked in. So that's where you see that total street dollar value can fluctuate a lot throughout the year. So that bottom line can go 50 million to 11 million to 19 million. What we like to look at is staff, is that second row is your, is your maintenance program. So you can see in 22, we had 9.1, in 23, you had 9.4, in 24, you have 9.8. So you can see that stable, but, but highly funded programs, and that's what we like to look at in terms of stability. Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, just back one and sorry, my mind was going through seeing all these numbers. Traffic engineering, you have at 23, $120,000, but then in 24, the 2.2, just refreshing, and I might know, but why such a big jump?
That is the inclusion of Third and Fourth Street two-way connection.
Okay, that's, that's, I just want to make sure. So then, after that, it'll go back, just new, it'll go back down to around 120,000, 150,000?
More than likely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm not getting back.
So is there any questions about the high levels of the proposed program before jumping into the individual projects? And Mayor, I don't.
Yep, we'll take a 10-minute break, be back at 9:40. So that's a nine-minute break.
We don't spend at all. When we get in July, we hold some of the over, so then we have money to do. I'm going to give you all of this, probably like two weeks of all the projects. A couple of the streets I had on that table, I'm funding all that, the money I've left to do, to do this spring. I'm going to have more, I'm going to probably have the money I get in July to use the rest of the construction here, just to.
Oh, it makes, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so that, that's, so the same, so we'll have money now. No, it's like all.
But see, they, if you, well, they pushed that out.
Anyway, it's in jail for 428. Well, that's where I'll credit Jim, our guy in yellow back there. We keep learning stuff and then the supplier will come back and be like, oh, you know what? We're not going to fill that order. So what you do with money? So that's where like the paperwork, but a couple of our other stuff, they'll first get the insurance and we can order it. This is the fun thing, I hate that one guy. And then, you know, so we have, no, we're actually, we're going to use it because we can, so, but yeah, I wasn't. I gotta start over. And so, yeah, yeah, no, but we're, we'll have it ready. So I don't know, Kevin already has it.
It's kind of interesting.
Those contracts, are these, are our contractors we do up? I, I think our biggest, for a buck, this is for.
When I get to that neighborhood, ma'am, because I have it up now, where it's a nice old road, it's like, these look like we're stretching, but we're going to think about now, is how, that is eight of, eight of these, about $800,000.
Yep, yep. Got me as well, so. Not too bad.
Pick up on the download swing?
So people are going to like me, that, that's a lot of line in one area. Yeah, but that's not the thing.
Yeah, it started, it started to.
We could go back and see.
Yep, so. I think, I think I, if I get, if I even went, I won't like.
I can't remember where the 13th Street Bridge, what page it's on.
It's in there.
I mean, it's just a place.
Yeah, it's way down the road.
I know, but.
Yeah, we put it in there.
Yeah, there's another show, Rob Cott, he's trying to sort of, you can check out this buddy's, Jared Reddard's, he writes stories. Otherwise, I think we'd be dinner right here on the other side. Run around with several hundred and thirty, a lot of work.
Any of those are muted, so that one's all.
Okay, so we're going to jump into the the project-specific portion of the presentation, and this will be for the full six-year program. So jumping in, we'll hit bridges first, we'll kind of go by categories of bridges, facilities, fleet, et cetera. First one up is the Bridge Maintenance Program. So every, per state code, every twenty-four months, the city conducts a biannual inspection of all of our bridges, of vehicular and pedestrian. And then we use that to prioritize our maintenance schedule as well as our replacement schedule. So in fiscal year twenty-four, we're set to have our inspection up again, so we have sixty thousand dollars. Across the full six-year plan, we have about one point two million, so that's not only our inspection cost, but then funding set aside to then do the repairs that are specified in that report. I like this map here because it shows you every dot you see on the screen is the location of vehicular bridge within the city of Davenport that is our responsibility. And you can kind of see, as the color coding, the legend, if you will, what we've been able to, what's in the six-year plan. So that is everything that is in green, we've actually included. Anything in orange is bridges that we've received work in the last three or four years. And then yellow is bridges scheduled to receive work this current year. So out there on the west side, you have Forty-Sixth Street over Cardinal Creek, that's gonna get replaced this year. I would say kudos to Brian and his engineering team, we've been really fortunate over the last few years because we've been almost been able to get a bridge replacement or a deck replacement every single year with state funding. So we go after that on an annual basis. So just off the top of my head as I'm looking, you know, one year we had Kimberly over Duck Creek. The next year was Division Street over Duck Creek, followed by, you know, we did go finish Elm. We're gonna roll into Forty-Sixth Street this year and then next street, or next year, my next project, is Utah Avenue Bridge over Duck Creek. So this is one that we recently just got a million-dollar grant for from the state. So about five hundred thousand dollars of city money for about one point five million dollar project. This design is in the works right now and we're looking to probably bid it later this fall for construction starting calendar year twenty-four. So ensuring that, you know, our our bridge system, that we're constantly looking at it and we're constantly making sure that we're putting funding aside to addressing issues that pop up. Next slide is, so Eastern Avenue Bridges, so within the six-year plan, you have, you can kind of see here, so three bridges kind of all kind of focused there together. So Bridge A and Bridge B is Eastern Avenue over Duck Creek, or Goose Creek, excuse me, both the north and south, so about four hundred and forty thousand dollars a piece for twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight, and that's for a deck replacement. If you recall back on the tables of the PowerPoint, the Safe Streets for All grant that we are currently, we've applied for and we're waiting to hear feedback on, actually includes full reconstruction of these bridges and actually raising them so that we can get a multimodal trail underneath them. So, uh, next is Bridge C, Eastern Avenue over Duck Creek, so it's kind of the bottom of the page there, about five hundred ninety thousand in twenty-six, twenty-seven, for a two-point-three million dollar federal grant. That is a grant that we've actually been approved of, so for Alderman Ortiz. This is one that goes through by state, so this is one we were seeking funding for. So it's, that's just the year in which it is programmed in, so you'll see that march forward. I know probably the last nine years, this project is always in our out years and we've always been seeking funding for. Bridge funding is kind of interesting, you have to be, it has to be in bad enough condition in order to score well, but obviously you don't want your bridge to be in bad enough condition that it's not safe. So it's this weird little gray area that you have to operate in when you're when you're trying to go for grants or trying to leverage funding. Next is in fiscal year twenty-five, we have seventy thousand dollars for the design of the South Clark Street Bridge over Black Hawk and then seven hundred thousand dollars for its replacement in twenty twenty-six. Next, we're gonna have a couple of facilities that we're gonna look into, so Modern Women Park, per the contract agreement that we have with the team. So we have a a specific dollar figure that is set into the budget, so in twenty-four, a little over five hundred thousand dollars, about three point six million across the six-year plan. Right next door is the Rivers Edge Facility, so a roof replacement scheduled in twenty-six, skate safe flooring at three hundred seventy-five thousand in twenty twenty-seven. And then that second seat device program all the way out on year six and six hundred thousand. I know Mallory and Coria's already brought this up earlier in the week, that this is, this particular facility is something that staff is gonna be studying to see what we want to do as a community. But once again, that six-year plan, those out years kind of just give you a sense from a budgetary perspective.
Yeah, is there, in looking at it, are you looking at the location, keeping it there, expanding it, all those things? Are there any grants? I mean, it is in a very low to modern income census tract.
We're gonna work with Chad and his team on a full evaluation of what community partnerships might be there, what grant opportunities, the full thing. I don't think there's a desire to relocate the facility.
Okay.
The city inherited it many years ago. And so I think it's how to best position it for the future.
We'll say folks from, um, big level ice boat are increasingly excited about the second seat of ice and how they foresee a lot of programming coming to that, so I hope that generates some things for us in the future.
So the next facility project we have is here at City Hall. So the first one you see in twenty twenty-four, planner boxes, I've gotten this question, hey, what is that? It's security, it's security bollards, that look very nice, let's just put it that way. Out in front, so that we make sure that we keep our our beautiful building here and our staff that's within it safe. So sixty thousand dollars in the next fiscal year, as well as we're looking at replacing some of the air handler components and roof replacement for this particular facility in twenty-four as well at six hundred thousand. Next is a series of projects, kind of rolled a bunch of them up into one, so we have our libraries. So obviously we have our three branches throughout the city, kind of on the left there, you can kind of see the number of projects that we have. Just making sure that those, you know, our library system is well-used and well-respected by our community. We want to make sure we can continue to provide those services. In twenty-four, finishing up some some meeting room upgrades at a hundred thousand dollars. Once again, in twenty twenty-six, another hundred thousand, and then you can kind of just see some some facility maintenance related items there. Same with our our fire station, so even though we have the huge Station Three project going on, we want to maintain all the remaining of our fire stations. So you can see in Station Five and Eight, scheduled for eight-track replacements next year, so about ninety-five thousand dollars. In twenty-five, we got roof replacement on Station Four, and then you can kind of see twenty-six, we have a fire boathouse protection, Station Six roof replacement, just some general maintenance of our facilities. Next is you see our fleet equipment purchases, so we've kind of already talked about this a little bit, so you can kind of see how we've rolled them all up, that the big electric bus grant is built into fiscal year twenty-four at five point five million dollars. And then you can see, we have an ongoing replacement schedule as it relates to our solid waste, so this is both our our garbage and recycling pieces of equipment. As you can kind of see from our previous conversation earlier in the day, those things are expensive, so we want to make sure that they are heavily utilized and that we keep those on a rotating basis. And then likewise, we have public safety vehicle replacement funded at high levels, as well as some of our ground replacements as well, so we're, keep our parks beautiful. So in total, across the six years, twenty-five million dollars. So our our next project is our demolition program as we get into our general government section. So this is the funding that is specifically set aside for any dilapidated homes that need to be demolished, so Rich and his crew.
We did that with Rich.
Oh, we missed a big one. We we did. Okay, so, yeah, that, thank you. So, excuse the, the map not working, but so the urban revitalization program, so in, I believe twenty nineteen is when we first funded that particular program. You can kind of see the, at least on your sheet, if you're looking at them, you can kind of see the parameters of the location of where, what is eligible for that one. In blue is previously funded projects, in orange is projects that were funded last year, and green is the Dream Plus that is funded through the ARPA program, so you can see, and that's what's kind of interesting, I like to use the software because you can kind of see over time how projects are developing. So we're continuing funding the urban revitalization program, a little over a million dollars in the twenty-four budget. Total of six point six million over the six-year program.
On the, when when will we hear, or, I mean, I know I, it's nice to drive by and you can see it through your eyes, but the success of Dream Plus or not, or what what level it is, because I, I, my personal opinion is, I hope if it is a success, that when we were first presented with this, there was four areas, maybe, you know, hopefully the council would consider another area to go into, make an investment in, because I, I just, for the residents that I personally have talked to that receive the money and they see their house, that's a great feeling. I mean, to to drive home from a long day of work and you pull up and your house is basically completely different, it makes you like not feel so bad to get up and go to work, I mean, and and just, you know, my 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 hope is that they take care of it now that it is remodeled and stuff, so I just hope, you know, we get some feedback soon on it or some real numbers, or it probably takes time, I understand that. But I, I hope we can go in another direction and look at those other zones and, you know, invest the money that we are getting, you know, like, like you said, we saved, we got money from the state, okay, we saved it, now let's invest it somewhere. And I want to invest back in the residents.
So Alderman Ortiz, I think that's a, your timing is impeccable, so we were actually talking about that in the construct of Dream, the original Dream of, as we enter our fifth year, now being able to go back and evaluate it. So it takes a good two years. From the council saying, let's do this, to it really being executed, and then really a year after that, so you can start to measure, and there are lots of other market factors at play too. And we're about to bring you Extreme Dream, which is the third installment of the program in the next month. So these are very stackable and at some point, probably in the next several years, we'll start to talk about concentration of investment versus kind of refocusing, and I know in Alderman Kelly's Ward and parts of Alderman Dunn's Ward and then in other parts of the city, there's been the, if this program is successful, if we can demonstrate success, can we replicate it? And with all programs, they need to be reassessed, and so we're probably coming into that next chapter here soon.
Okay, because like I said, we talk about, well, we have, and I know certain funds can only be used for certain things, but hey, we need to draw down this fund, we need to invest the money, I just hope that maybe another section of town could maybe get some of that money and and we can improve another part of town, like, hopefully, I believe this will ultimately do, be a very well invest of the city's money, so thank you.
Miss Lee. Quick, Tom, quick question, based on your memo on Thursday restricting my access, can I ask questions here? Okay, restricting my access to staff, okay. I have a question on the Davenport Now program, on page one hundred and eight of the booklet. You're spending five point five million through twenty twenty-nine, when do those payments end? Because I understand that those are for people that are currently in the program. When are we gonna get out of that and we have that money available for other uses?
So when the council discontinued the program, it was about a ten-year buydown, so we are still in the early stages of that. We can get you the exact year, but it's it's many, many years away yet.
So it's going to be that five point five million every five years?
It decreases little by little, the the initial year was nine million, so it goes down a little by little, but over the ten years, there'll still be significant impact to the funds, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the save, Mayor. Next is the demolition program, so I'm sorry, Rich, I was just excited to get to your stuff. Is the funding that we set aside, so two hundred thousand dollars in in the next fiscal year, one point one million over the six-year program. You can kind of see what's been blue is is what's been, Rich and his team have done since two thousand sixteen, and orange is what they did last year. So once again, it this provides a key funding source for us to be able to address issues that kind of reach the point of no return. Next is our.
Mr. Khan.
Sorry, I was sitting on my comments, but I guess I'll make them once more.
Sorry, I was sitting on my comments, but I guess I'll make them once more, since it's just sort of a reframing period. Um, as it pertains to demolition and neighborhood revitalization, it, it challenges you to look at it through different lenses, because doing a lot of good and being equitable is a noble thing, but having an effect on the marketplace is another. And I engage in that conversation as often as I can, because I, I always have to, uh, try to figure out what we're doing and what, and what we're gonna get back. Um, maybe Davenport Dream isn't the vehicle to, um, to flip a neighborhood in a, uh, in a generation, or, or, uh, uh, or, and when I say flip, what I mean is, um, take a project that received subsidies and allow the neighborhood to gain enough traction that the next guy doesn't need subsidies to get his money back out of it, or for, or to be upside down on the project. That's, that's the riddle that I don't think we have a lot of traction on yet, because it's a, it's a trickier problem. Um, so just for the dialogue, those are the two lenses that I continue to look at neighborhood revitalization through, and trying to figure out, um, what project is doing what, and where we're gaining ground, and where we're not, depending on what your mission statement is. So, thank you.
Next is our library materials program. Uh, so every year, as part of the CFP, we provide, um, an annual allotment, um, for the purchase of books, magazines, um, CDs and DVDs, any electronic stuff for our three library branches. So in fiscal year 24, about $465,000. And I know Jeff and his team, uh, they do a fantastic job, um, with this particular program every single year. Um, so across the full six-year plan, it's about 2.5 million dollars. Next, as we get into our, our park system, so, um, the park development program is that annual program that allows the city council to allocate funding to specific park, um, projects. Uh, Chad, um, and his team, typically the process goes that they'll seek, um, uh, they'll, they'll provide their thoughts to their park advisory board, and then allow them, um, to act in their capacity, uh, to make recommendations, and then they bring it to you for approval. On the map, you can kind of see where, since 2015, um, that they spread it pretty evenly throughout the park system. Um, what's in blue is past years, what's in orange was, is the current fiscal year. And so in the upcoming year, we maintain that funding level at about 350,000 a year, and about $2 million over the six-year time, time span.
Mr. Coach.
Um, we spoke a little bit about Main Street Landing and that project. Going forward, will we, will we need to do something similar yet different for Main Street Landing? So, you know, this park development program doesn't get pilfered from, and we've heard in the past about how, you know, operations and capital expenditures for our parks lag a little bit, and we've kind of talked about, hey, yep, we're getting all this money, we're gonna be able to do something really transformational, but we're gonna be able to pay for it going forward, so, I mean, are we gonna have to create something separate and different? So this maintains.
So one of the things, oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, one of the things that, uh, we owe you, um, as that project moves forward, is the maintenance plan for that particular park. Um, the park development program, as it lives within the capital budget, is the replacement of assets throughout the system as a whole. And a lot of that, we, um, rely on the expertise and advice of the park director.
Cool, thank you.
Ms. Lee. Uh, two things in parks that I don't see in your presentation. One is, um, and I've brought this up from the die several times, the Leclerc Park band shell has been in the budget for quite a while, and it needs cleaning, it needs painting, um, and it fell out of the budget this year. And I really would like to see that band shell cleaned up. I mean, it's visible from the road, we use it for the symphony and all sorts of things. Uh, and I was disappointed to see it fall out this year. Um, uh, so I, I'd like to see that fall back in, or find some kind of couch cushion money for it, or something. I'm not talking about all the chairs, just the band shell itself. And I understand it's historical, and we have to do it right.
A grant, yeah.
But let's go for some grants or something for, like that, if we can. Uh, and the other one is, we do have a thing for painting the, um, railing along Leclerc Park. Well, if you check it out, it's completely rotted and in many sections completely, uh, separated from the, uh, where it's attached to the seawall. It's not attached anymore, and you could actually take it and shake it. And I, I did write an email that I saw city liability. Did have somebody just go through over at, um, Vets Memorial Park, just go right through the railing. You don't even have to have a car to go through this, you can push it over. So rather than painting, I really think we need to be looking at, um, replacement from a safety and liability standpoint, as well as aesthetics, of course.
And we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, that's, um, yeah. Now, that, that's tied to RF 005.
As, not meaning to be argumentative, but as a person who got out and helped paint that railing all along Centennial last spring, we did the whole thing down from the ballpark around, um, there are some, it's a very substantial railing, it is a his, kind of historic railing, and it is, we, you would never be able to build it again, like it is. It is very, when it's solid, it's very solid. So I would prefer, and I did, there are some places where they've done some weird reattachments, I would prefer repair, because it is substantial material where it is solid, so that's-
Oh, and I wouldn't think we would ever be able to replicate anything, um, honestly as substantial as the structure, but certainly it needs some work in places. And while you were painting, I was cleaning, so.
Yeah, exactly.
But my, my-
The fair point about having it looked at, absolutely fair point.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying replace it, I'm just saying it needs to be fixed.
Next we have, uh, is our playground replacement program. So in 26, we have 170,000, and in 29, another 170,000. Um, one of the reasons, we, we typically fund this on an every other year, um, basis, but kind of referring back to previously approved projects, the ARPA spending plan and your, and your current capital program actually has substantial amount of playground replacement in there. So it's one of those things of, a lot of times, we like to balance, um, current years with upcoming future years. But nevertheless, as you can kind of see what the map indicates, um, you know, Chad and them have been, um, aggressively, um, replacing our, our playground structures throughout the system. Next is golf course improvements. So, um, every other year, starting in 2025, about $225,000, um, in 25, 27, and 29, um, for improvements to the, uh, golf course, um, system. So, and that can be a whole host of problems that Chad and Troy, um, or, or items that they're, that they'll be addressing.
Mr. Condon.
In keeping with Alderman Condon's, uh, response about maintaining cultural and, uh, like, uh, amenities for the, uh, city of Davenport, uh, we need to, to really look at the golf courses, to say we're gonna commit to them, or we're just gonna keep going along the way it is. When you do things at a golf course, it's, you do it once and then it's good for 15, 20 years. It's usually costly when you do it, but, uh, you know, you don't have to come back and visit that problem every other year or something. So I'd like, uh, the, the staff to be looking at, uh, putting down necessary, uh, enhancements to the golf courses, and not just sort of saying, we're gonna give you, you know, $225,000 a year for three golf courses, uh, because that really doesn't, it just puts Band-Aids on them. And you, and like I said, like you, we've said earlier, you know, if you don't fix the stuff, uh, you usually pay for it four times later.
So, uh, love to discuss what particular things you'd be interested in.
Sure. Uh, and then next is Credit Island Park Improvement. So, uh, once again, this is, uh, so in fiscal year 24, we have 250,000, 100,000 in 25, and then 100,000 in 29, for a total of 450,000. So this is another one of those that has, um, a number of components, um, built within that particular dollar figure, whether it's soil amendments, um, or just general, um, repairs throughout the entire system there. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to see us concentrate on the windows.
Windows?
Yeah, because we, you know, when that, we had it reconstructed 10 years ago after the fire, that was, pardon, that got taken out because it was over budget, and the windows are in pretty bad shape, and you know, you're trying to heat that building in the winter, you're trying to keep it cool in the summer, you're just throwing a lot of money out through the windows. So I, I, you know, not only does it, it would make it look better, it'd be more, you know, economical.
Okay.
I would like us to look at that.
Are you through, Rick? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, because I agree with you. I, I've checked those windows. Um, the Credit Island Causeway study, it was supposed to be this year, um, and it's got moved back another year, it's 150,000. Um, I think it's a really important study, and, um, I'd like to see it done. I know we'd have to take 150,000 out of something else, but I, I don't want to see it keep moving year by year and not getting done. I think we can do a lot of really good things and improve the use of Credit Island itself if we get that Causeway study done, and ultimately the, um, the Causeway replaced with something that allows the water to flow. And I just am seeing it, you know, just back to back to back.
Yep.
We could do a lot more recreation using the water, I believe, if we can get a, uh, that Causeway fixed.
I, I was just gonna say, I think that's one we're currently seeking grants for, right?
Yes, we are looking for opportunities to see if there are, either state or federal chances that we can go for grants.
And that would be for the study and possibly even for the Causeway?
Yes.
Yeah. That'd be great.
I think we have a chance of one.
Good, okay. Good.
So, yep, that, that was actually, you know, going to be just a point of emphasis. I wanted to, to, to state is that I think the future success of Credit Island is really, uh, based upon our ability to seek out grants and to be able to improve that Causeway so it doesn't get washed out during floods. And if we're able to do that, I think ultimately, uh, Credit Island could, uh, be better for it. Tied to that, I, I saw, I think it was the second year that the River Run improvement commission submitted the River West study, uh, $25,000, and I see that it's not in the current year's budget, I think it's pushed out a year or two, but-
I think it's 2027.
2027. Um, so they're really looking for, uh, some work to do, and they really view, uh, that particular study as the value that they can bring to the city. It is not a, uh, do the study and implement it tomorrow type of thing. Um, so to push that out, um, three budget years, um, five in total from their first request, um, I don't know, I think 25 is something that we can do, uh, pretty easily, and it gives them some, uh, importance, and, and I think that that particular commission needs a, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Mr. T.
Mayor, you would note to your chairman, since, you know, with the bike trails and the, the trails through the bike state policy, would Credit Island be considered trails where we can ask for something through that? Because I, as you know, there's some money coming up, or that we're, we're available that maybe we can get that through by state, and-
The technical committee is aware, and, uh-
Well, as a member on it, I would like, that's something that we can push forward.
As a member of the chair.
Yeah.
Happy to take that on.
Yes, because I think there's a good opportunity to, I think we can get some money in that, through that organization or body. Thank you.
We'll look at that.
And one other thing about Credit Island, uh, I go down there a lot, walk and bike, and I did the clean, I did Credit Island cleanup all by myself, I spent a lot of time down there. Um, would it be appropriate, I've kind of thrown this out to you, Rick, too, about making that road, once you get past the lodge at one way, so that it's safer? Because it's a narrow road, you've got bicyclists, you've got cars going both ways, you got walkers.
I believe that's a discussion we've had before in the past, and it never really got any traction. I, I know speaking with the Friends group, you know, I know there was some folks that wanted to close the road down completely, and that was-
Yeah, I can't see that happening, but-
That wasn't a thing, but I guess, I guess we could look at it again, I mean, you know, but that's-
No cars. No cars. Yeah, I, I-
You guys look at it.
Yeah, let, let's talk about that a little bit more. Thank you.
Uh, next, we're getting into, uh, our multimodal transportation, and we're, it's gonna be centered, um, on sidewalks in ADA. Uh, so the first project, creating connections. So this is, um, one of the, one of the main focuses of how we do our sidewalk repair program. So one of our most popular, um, assessment program, not assessment, but assessment and partnership programs is the 50-50 repair. And so you can kind of see since 2016 on the map, every item or every dot is a location that has utilized that program. And what's in orange is what we were able to accomplish last year. So about $650,000 set aside in 2024, um, and about 3.6 million across the six years. Once again, it's a really, it's a really, um, well-received program, and it's something that the residents seek out, um, so it's really nice to have that, um, for the city to be able to assist them in that repair.
Mr. Joseph. Um, maybe just for my colleagues here, um, I don't know if we ever want to consider including sidewalk installation in this as well. Um, in six wards, there's neighborhoods and areas that don't have sidewalks, and I've gotten contacts, don't worry, Tim, I'm not gonna look on Jersey Ridge, don't get your mom mad at me. Um, but other areas there that, you know, that don't fall within, and, you know, people say, hey, you know, we gotta walk in the street, or, you know, we're walking over underneath the ground, so for safety issues, and, uh, you know, this program doesn't necessarily cover that, so I don't know if that's a conversation we'll have in the future as far as expanding our connectivity.
So Alderman, Joe, John, oh, sorry, Mayor.
No, I was just gonna say, this conversation comes up about every couple of years, and there's never consensus, because there's significant issues on both sides. You guys want to have it again, probably good, but there's significant issues on both sides of this.
Usually we find while the residents want the sidewalk, the fair market value of the land that we have to acquire to construct the sidewalk becomes the impediment to moving it along. Um, and then, you know, Alderman Group of Neighborhood is probably one of the prime examples of it, of half want it, half don't, and it becomes a, the neighborhood issue.
Didn't we just see a slide earlier about safety, something like that? It's a good point, Rick. It's a valid conversation, it's just we've never had any consensus, because you have significant differences on each side of this issue. We'll say one place we really ought to look in, I've said this for years, but going up Waverly, there's no sidewalks and, you know, all those schools, kids walking to schools, but keep looking at that.
Yeah, we've tried to get the schools to-
Right.
-pay for their parks near the schools, and historically-
Historically, that hasn't happened going forward, I don't know. So it's just, we can't do it ourselves, so.
It'd be expensive.
There's so many, most schools don't have access, but they won't do it, so.
Uh, our next program is our civic access program. So this is the installation or the repair of existing ADA ramps throughout the city, so, uh, quarter of a million dollars in 2024, about 1.4 million across the six years. Um, once again, I'm sorry for being, repeating myself here, but the map will show you what we've been able to accomplish over the last few years, um, versus what we're going for, um, you know, this current calendar year.
And I want to say thanks, because I've pushed, we've pushed for this, there are none in my neighborhood at all, period, none, nowhere. Um, and now that is almost complete, and we really appreciate it. It's helpful for everything, from people who, uh, need access because they personally can't get around to moms pushing baby carriages and everything else, or dads, I guess, too, pushing baby carriages. So I thank you for that, because it, it's been a really good thing.
And one of the things that we ran into with a new set of ADA ramps on sidewalks in Ridgeview, is that because of drainage problems, the bottom of the ramps were low, and we had, you know, like six-inch puddles right there at the ramps. So something that needs to be considered as we, um, design and implement those kinds of things, just make sure that the drainage is taken care of, so that if somebody is using it for wheelchair or baby carriage or whatever, they're not going through a very deep puddle. And that was over at Pacific.
Mm-hmm.
That's just the only example I have, but there may be others.
Next is the flood resiliency program, uh, or multi-tiered programs that we have here. So one, you already talked about was in 25, the, the Credit Island Causeway, it's all redundant. Alderman Dunn has already mentioned, we are trying to work with some state and federal partners to see if we can get that, either the study or implementation or some form of other funded and leveraged with other resources. In twenty-four, we have that million dollars, that's for the structural solutions. So that will, having that there on a given base, on an annual basis is very helpful. So when we go out and get grants, that that can be our match. So then I'll, I'll refer back to, we were able to get that earmark for River Drive and Marquette. So now instead of having to wait and budget for our match in another year, having this available helps us to quickly move forward and we're able to immediately, within six or seven months of getting that earmark, we're now able to move into construction. So having something like that is, is really, really important.
So I had a question about this when I saw it. So, so we're budgeting this, and this isn't a criticism, I'm just trying to understand it. So that if an opportunity comes along, we can say we have it and can move with it rather than having to wait. Is that, that's basically, so we might not use this every year? Is that correct?
We may not use all of it every year. But you, you are correct.
Okay.
So it's, it's kind of, think of it sort of like how we use our street programs. It's a big bucket of money that we could use for a multitude of reasons. One of the things we are going to be doing is our second and last phase for, um, Black Hawk Creek firms for that restoration project. We're going to be using some of this money. About midway through that earmark process, we kind of felt good about it. And so that's, we used, um, within the current fiscal year, we used some of this money to hire the engineering so that we can kickstart ourselves. So when we, if we did get it, which we were able to, we can move into construction. So it, it allows us some level of flexibility, but for your sake, we, we will not just sit on the money. We are going to be using it throughout the given year.
In, in a most serious conversation we had concerning going wherever, one of the first questions, what is the city funding? So when you say, here it is. Oh, that immediately gets them to take a series.
Very good.
Yep.
Next is my, next series of projects are all my favorite ones. And so the sewers.
Mine, too.
Because, you know, not everyone gets excited about sewers. So. Our contract sewer repair program, so this is the, so about one point two-five million in twenty-four, seven point seven million across the six-year program. This particular bucket of money allows us to, we have a number of contractors on call. So when sinkholes develop throughout our system that we need to respond to quickly, we have a number of people that we can call that we're already on contract for. And you can see how, um, how we've had to use that throughout the years, um, in this particular one. And I, Kevin Oliver's here today, so he helps run our program, does a great job. So it's, it's widely used throughout the system and it's, it's a needed expense.
As I said, the history, quick, um, a few years ago, probably a decade, we had an onslaught of sewer backups and water coming out of our manholes and et cetera, et cetera. And people were outraged in how much money they had to pay to get stuff fixed. And we implemented that and now we don't have that. It's one of the most popular programs, even though not sexy program, but it's probably. Just wanted to add for history.
So that's Mayor's access, a great preview for the next.
That's the next slide. Thank you very much.
No, I, no, I. I would say that out of all of our cost share programs we have, this is by far the most popular that we have. And you can, once again, looking at the map, you can see how extensive it's been utilized by our residents and throughout our community. So about one point two million in twenty-four, seven million, seven point two million in six years. I would actually say we, we had to up the, the budget for it because it's so widely used. I think a couple of years ago, it was probably around eight hundred and then it was at a million. And now we bumped it up to one point two million because it's so widely used by our residents. So once again, a, a really huge project. And, you know, when you get into that unfortunate situation, if something like that happens, having, um, something like this where you as a resident have a five hundred dollar deductible, you reach out to the city. We have probably generally on average, four or five contractors. You can pick which one you want, the city covers up to ten thousand dollars. We have our contractors, we'll take care of that particular problem for you. It's, it's a great program to have.
And it's all part of our sewer bill, which is just, um, minor, first, just a small percentage of that. That covers all this. And this is probably one of the best programs we had, like the mayor said, ten years ago, we didn't have it. And, uh, it's great.
Um, the next is a series of projects. So I'll give Nicole a kudos here. Um, so originally we signed the Iowa DNR consent order sometime ago, I think around twenty-twelve timeframe, twenty, twenty-ten to twenty-twelve. They had very specific projects that they spelled out within that consent order that we had to abide by. We were able to complete those projects. And, and what they then, then allowed us to do is to shift the nature of that consent order. Instead of making continual improvements at the bottom of the, the collection system, which is the plant for capacity purposes, they allowed us to continue to, um, use our resources at fixing things in the actual system itself. That obviously, if you fix it in the system, it doesn't get, make its way down to the plant, but it also fixes it for our residents in our community. And so they've allowed us to do that. And you can kind of see how we're going to be addressing it throughout the next six years. It's either through direct connections, so where the sanitary and the storm sewer system are combined. We have about two million dollars next year set aside, twelve million over the six years to eliminate those direct connections. Manhole rehabilitation pro, um, excuse me, I and I removal programs, those are the big dots you see on the map. So you can see we've addressed them over time. That manhole rehabilitation program, those are the smaller dots on the map. So blue is things that we have completed since, I think, two thousand and sixteen. So a substantial amount of manholes and that's a really good cost. If you're looking from a cost benefit perspective, removing I and I from the system, fixing your manholes is one of the biggest ones you can do. So we've continued to move forward in that. And so about three million dollars over a six-year time period. And then sewer lining program. So this is one where instead of removing and replacing kind of broken pipe system, we actually put a pipe within a pipe. And so we can maintain structural integrity for another forty, fifty-plus years. And so we have about three point seven million over the six-year time period. And you can, once again, kind of see, those are the lines on the map. So we've been investing heavily into these three programs the last probably six to eight years. And you can kind of see that as it's represented on the map and we're going to continue that. We meet annually with the DNR and they are, I would say, very happy with the progress that we've been making. In fact, you know, when we show them these things like this, they, they love to see the progress that we continue to invest heavily from a, from a value perspective, from a dollar figure perspective. And they can continue to see that we're actually using that to benefit the system. So once again, these are three fantastic programs that, that we fund.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for working this because for folks who remember when this consent decree came, we didn't do things like this every year. That number that we would have to pay is astronomical and no, there's no way we would afford, it'd be insane.
There are examples of municipalities not far from here that said, screw that, and were dissent, consent decree given a bill. And that bill was astronomical. So I thank you for, and I thank the council for, again, the mental, um, the mentality about do a little bit, pay a little bit instead of that number that can't, I, I can't even describe the number that would have been. So thank you for that. Ms. Lee, did you have, Ms. Lee?
I, I did. One of the things I noticed got moved back is the sump pump abatement program. And it got moved back to twenty-twenty-seven to twenty-twenty-eight, which we all know is funny money, you know? But actually, that sump pump abatement, I would think, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, would also play a key role. Because when people are dealing with ice and slippery algae because of sump pumps going down the, the gutters, they'll tend to put it into the storm sewer in their house. So, um, how much of a contribution does sump pump potentially, you know, people doing it illegally in their house contribute to inflow and infiltration?
So it's a great question. Not built within the presentation, but built within the budget is a lot item called Neighborhood I and I Removal Program. And so we've started a study to then look at what individual contributions from each household could be contributing to I and I. At some point, you could spend, you know, you as a body could spend a hundred million dollars removing all the direct connections and you're still going to get inflow into the system through, you know, historically, people have tied into the system themselves. That becomes a question because that's more of a personal, that's not us addressing the public system. That's a little bit of the private into the public system. So we're actually studying that now and maybe have some data for you in the next year or two and be able to present that if, let's say if the data is significant, then we'd like to then come before you present the data and then some recommendations for programs that we may be able to fund to start eliminating that.
I, I've pushed this one every year too, but I, I've also noticed that we've been able, within the stormwater fund, if we find a particular issue that we want to take care of, we can shift that money through budget amendment to fix the problem. So, I mean, if there is problems, we can, you know, when we think they're serious enough, we can address them.
Because it also affects, I, I know in my neighborhood, and this is before I ever go on council, it was so bad that people were falling down. But most importantly, it really undercut the road, the public road. So it completely broke up the concrete and, um, and it's been fixed, you know, to a degree. So it's, so it's a bigger picture with all of that. So I really think sump pump abatement is a really important issue on several aspects of public works.
Yep, we, so we have a separate program for if there's some pumps causing ice problems that we can kind of address and that program is currently funded in the current fiscal year. But then your larger question of how it may affect the I and I, that is something that we're looking at. So maybe in the next year or two, um, we'll have enough, um, data and information to present to you to see if we need to create a different program and then if so, what those recommendations are.
Okay.
Does it require new development to put in a sump pump line case? Or is that something we have to maybe look at?
Our city engineer says yes.
They gotta put a line, whether they put the sump pump.
Well, they don't have to put the sump pump, but the resident can hook to that instead of, right.
But it's not a required connection, if I understand, because there's usually a cost from the house to the, to the abatement and people have a, a chance to choose. But if we could have that built into.
But at least they have a place to take it to.
Yeah.
That's the key, right?
And it's usually not that expensive to connect. That'd be great to consider.
So moving out of the sewer programs into more specific sanitary sewer projects. So this one, as you'll notice, is talking about how things march forward or march backwards in the CIP. So the Tremont Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement, um, because of the, the nature of this one, so the dollar figure, three point five million dollars total, we funded it through multiple fiscal years. So the last year that it's scheduled to receive funding, so a million dollars in twenty-twenty-four, you're actually going to see this project get bid out as soon as you all approve the twenty-four budget. We'll actually bid this project out and you'll, you'll see construction this year. The fun story behind this one, I, I guess if you're weird-like staff, um, is there's actually, one of the reasons we're doing this is particular, I believe it's at Twelve and Leclair, that manhole there is about thirty feet deep. So if we wanted to be able to replace it or maintain it, we're digging a thirty-foot hole in the center of an intersection. That's not a sustainable way to develop your sewer system, which is why we're then going to then build a new sewer system that's, that's better and more modernized and so we can sustain, um, maintain it over time.
I had a question and I asked this last year, so I'm just, um, this is now moved to a new ward and I just, um, to, um, so it has a new Alderman, that, most of it, uh, which is a good thing for, for certainly anybody who lives there, whatever ward they're in. But, and it was my understanding that the streets will be up and so new streets will be down in these areas as well.
Meaning whether we're replacing the streets as part of the project?
Yeah, yeah.
If, if it calls for it, we certainly will. However, I'll, I'll, I'll take another look and, and get back to you. If on, we're sometimes, because this is sanitary money, if we only need to replace a portion of the street to install the sewer, then that's what we'll do, um, because, you know, we have to be respectful of the source of funding. But let me check back with you. I think there is some sections of this that gets full street replacement and then certain sections is partial.
I think that's what you said. I mean, some of this street is pretty rough, so I don't think you'll see, but anyway.
If it makes sense and we're allowed to replace it, we will replace it.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Next is the Duck Creek Sewer Interceptor Extension. So this is one you're, you're all familiar with, kind of how we had in previous discussions in the fall that we were going to fund a little bit of it out of different funding sources. One particular one was a million dollars out of, uh, this upcoming CIP. So that's, there you have it in your, in your budget. But once again, kind of talking how we spoke earlier in the day, um, probably look for this one to get bid out at some point this, uh, this spring.
I think I was looking at this bass ackwards the other night. This runs from west east to the diver, to the diversion tunnel, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
For some reason, the other night, I was like, we're not dumping this into the West Lake Lagoon, are we?
We were, we were doing it to remove the lagoon.
That's right.
Is, uh, is the correct thing, so yes.
Thank you.
This is a big deal, just say that. Long time coming.
Is the cost here for twenty-twenty-four, that's a million dollars? That does not include the ARPA funding?
No, that's, this is just purely what is in the, the twenty-four CIP. So the ARPA funding's already been appropriated and so it's not included in that total.
Okay, because it's a lot more expensive than this.
It is, yes, ma'am. Next is, Alderman Lee's already talked about this one a little bit, um, so a little bit of my thunder, but comprehensive waterside natural resource, that, um, that's meant, so this is our partnership with the Corps. And this is just our second year allocation for that one at two hundred thousand dollars. And then the next set, so now we're moving into our, our street, um, system. So just as a kind of clarification, the way we fund streets, so from a maintenance program perspective, we've broken it up into two programs. One's high volume and then one's neighborhood. High-volume streets is typically your arterials and your collectors. And this is what staff uses, um, to fund either the replacement or the, from the resurfacing of those streets. We do utilize, um, kind of predictive analysis software. We look at traffic volumes, there's a whole host of variables we look for the selection. One of the reasons why I like to use this software and use this map is if you were to take away all the blue lines on the, on the map, it kind of looked a little selective and disjointed. But it's nice to see, you know, from a seven-year window where we've been and then where we're going and how all of it connects to each other. And I'll, and here's a particular example for this one. So I'll pick, um, West Locust. So from Harrison Street all the way to Lincoln, um, you know, with our proposed, one of our proposed projects for this upcoming year is Locust from Marquette to Division. By performing that project and over a six-year time span, we'll have completed, once again, Harrison all the way to Lincoln, fully resurfaced roadway. And so you can kind of see how these things are, are knitted together over time. Um, and likewise, you can see that throughout the entire system. So that's one of the reasons why I, I like to show these in map format because you can kind of see how everything connects. So in twenty-twenty-four, we got four point six million with twenty-seven million dollars over a six-year time period.
I just, I'd like to say glad, kudos to you and like I said, the people of the fourth ward from that Marquette to Division Street on Locust Street is, thank you, thank you. And then let me say thank you again because that is, like I said, third busiest street in Davenport. So much over there, especially during fair time. But like I said, you drive down that street even now, holy moly, you know, it's, it's, if you're in a certain lane, it's, it's pretty ugly. So like I said, thanks to the council, thanks to staff, like I said, but thank you for getting that part done.
So with that, then we'll move into our, our neighborhood streets, um, conversation. So once again, so at about, in twenty-twenty-four, we got four point four million dollars, twenty-six point seven million dollars over the six-year time, timeframe. The way we handle neighborhood, um, neighborhood streets is, once again, I'm not getting too confusing here, is we have two separate ways or two separate methods in which we do this. First is contracted neighborhood streets. So these are the large-scale contracts that you all, that you all see on a given basis that you approve of. And then the second group is our in-house. So this four point four million dollars, the combination of both of those things. So three million dollars of it is the contracted and then the, like, one point four million is for our in-house material standpoint. So what we'll go over first is your contracted-out neighborhood roadways. So these are ones that are engineered, um, engineered and designed. What you have in front of you, um, and this is a relatively new program, I would say in the grand scheme of things, probably four years. So what you see on blue is what has been performed in those past. And what you see in orange is what we are proposing. I will say in the next two weeks, I'm actually going to give all of you the full, um, construction year twenty-twenty-three schedule. So that includes streets, sewers, everything. So you'll have that in the next two weeks. One of the things I like to touch base on when it comes to neighborhood roadways and, um, a lot of times, um, projects, Project A and Project B aren't always the same. I always like to say all streets are different and they're, and they're. I always like to say all streets are different and their, and their scope. And just to give you a quick example, so you can kind of see off to the side here, let's say there's probably the longest line on the map, let's say Telegraph, or you'll have down here at Ricker Hill. That's actually part of an overlay program and we're talking scope. So when you're talking, we're basically just putting down a couple, brain, a couple inches of brand new asphalt and that's all. Eight projects encompass that whole program. So, you know, of those, those are two projects in an eight-project set. It totaled about $800,000. However, when you're trying to compare them to other particular projects, last year, our largest reconstruction project was 41st Street and that was about $817,000 for about a two and a half block stretch. So once again, kind of hard to see from a dollar-figure perspective because different scopes, different treatments kind of equal different dollar figures. And we try to do as much as we can and be as efficient with our resources as we possibly can moving forward.
Back to the high-volume streets and then the neighborhood streets, just so I understand. There's like in the high volume, there's some little blue lines. Is that based on like 75 cars per hour? Is it looked at per hour determines high volume or if it doesn't reach that threshold, it's considered neighborhood street?
So we have in, we have classifications of roadways. And so what we call arterials and collectors, those are the roads that you travel on to get from point A to point B. So your Locust, your Divisions, your Central Parks, Eastern Jersey, that carry all your traffic. That's your, that's how we classify those as arterials or collectors. That's what's the high-volume bucket. However, your neighborhood roadways is typically where your residential homes are located. Those are your, your labels. So we actually have something in the classification system called local and those are our local roadways.
So do some streets move up the list? I mean, I hear about this list or when stuff's done, according to how much traffic they get?
If they're, so traffic volume is something that we pay attention to more on the high-volume roadways. For instance, if you take a look, if you can spend a million dollars on Locust Street, which gets probably anywhere between 15,000 cars a day, and if you do it by day, that's how they track it. Or you could spend a million dollars on a roadway that gets, you know, I would say 500 cars a day. Then there's a benefit cost associated with that. And so with that, we try to make sure to touch as many tires as possible to get that higher benefit. When you're talking neighborhood roadways, we typically don't look at that as much because you're typically dealing with anywhere between 100 to 500 cars a day. So that that benefit cost doesn't play as big a factor, but we do try to look at it. One of the things we like to look at is, is it on a snow route? So is it an emergency route as we're, as we're looking through that? We have a whole host of variables we look at when trying to make sure that we determine which ones we present to you for replacement.
I just want to add, thanks to this council, the previous council and staff. Few years ago, didn't do alleys. You see, we doing a bunch of alleys. Few years ago, didn't do neighborhood streets. Now you guys said do neighborhood streets. So this map wouldn't have existed a couple of years ago. So when people say fix streets, the amount of stuff that we're improving to fix and adding to the pot to fix is pretty, pretty significant. So you should be proud of that. Lot of detours, so be patient, Alderman Lee. Just to be clear, the reason you're getting so much like Telegraph and Ricker Hill, that's still quote, right?
That's correct.
Not asphalt. Ms. Lee?
When will we be getting the updated ADT data from DOT for Davenport? And, because, because I'd like a copy of the maps, just like we got with the 2018 data. Do you know when that's coming in?
Originally, we were told first of the year, but.
That's what I remembered.
That could be anywhere between now and April. But let us check back in with them and, and we'll, we'll respond back and see, you know, if they have a better, more tighter timeline for us.
That'd be great. Thank you. What, I'm sorry?
And Clay, since last few years at this time, I usually bust your chops a little bit about some of my angst. You know, I, I do want to thank you. It's, it is great to see this investment. Hopefully, you know, over the next few years, it continues to grow. I know it is challenging and, and something that we, as Ward Aldermen, you know, we probably come at you at multiple different angles, you know, fighting for our neighborhood streets and roads. I am glad that you're giving us the list in a couple of weeks, because my eyes were kind of figure out where those were on the map. And so again, just probably thank you. I know it's a hard job and despite sometimes my negative comments publicly or via email. Appreciate what you do. I'm fighting it, fighting.
Next, this is the second component of our neighborhood street program is the use of our in-house workforce. So once again, 1.4 million dollars of that allocation for 2024 is set aside for the purchase of materials. And so you can kind of see over time, I think this is since 2015, what our in-house workforce has been able to do. Now they are limited, unlike with contracts, of what we are able to do. Some of that is our own expertise, the equipment that we have and then some state regulations that we must follow. But nevertheless, whatever those things may be, we, we follow those and then we move forward on getting a number of streets redone every year. I think last year we were over 20-plus. So once again, we just continue to hammer those out and it provides that funding source for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. And if you could, yeah, I appreciate it. So there's two sheets that say neighborhood repair program.
Yes.
And one shows, blue is a completed, so blue says past completed projects. But then this one also has past completed. So that's what I don't understand the difference and I apologize. I can, I can see one that I know popped up last year. There was one block of Sixth Street that you guys did a great job on and, but, and it wasn't actually budgeted. So I guess I'm trying to understand the difference between this one and this one.
So the first, so a couple of years ago, the city council, because we, we used to have the, these, these two, I guess you could say, programs split up, both the contracted out and in-house. The council at the time, a couple of years ago, asked that we merge these together, which is why they appear as a lump sum dollar figure, the big 4.4 million.
Okay, okay.
The first, one that you see is what we use for contract.
So this is the contract?
The contract. And then it'll, it'll say it on the map for the first one of what we use out for contract.
Okay.
And then the second one is what we then use for the, our in-house capability.
Okay, but, okay, so, but there is no, but there is no in-house capability 2023 projected projects. That's what's confusing me. It says.
Not yet.
Okay, so when will we see that, I guess? Because there's a lot more of that than.
We should see that in the next couple of weeks. One of the reasons our, our in-house crews like to, sometimes this, in the budget cycle, doesn't always align correctly. Because we as staff always like to go out and evaluate the street condition in the spring, following winter, because winter can always play havoc. You know, not everything deteriorates as the way you kind of think it is. And so sometimes things kind of fall faster than, than you would imagine. So we like to wait a little bit into the spring in order to provide that list, but we'll have that to you for sure.
If I could beg your favor, I know they wanted it separated, but could we like get, because there's going to be a lot more done than this, because there's going to be the ones that are going to be done that we don't know yet. So could we get one that says all the neighborhood and maybe have a, you know, for 2023, one orange and green to, so we can actually see everything that's going to be done in 2023?
Yes, happy to do that.
That'd be great. But thank you for the clarification.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Council.
There's some consideration being given to switching from concrete to asphalt and new residential. And it's funny how we have perceptions about something like asphalt versus concrete, but asphalt would allow us to grow this and self-perform more upkeep?
Like we always say, there aren't a lot of tools that will help us if we look at that long-term preservation.
I'll keep an eye on that. Thanks.
Our next program is the alley repair program. So this is another one of our partnership programs with, with residents. In fiscal year 24, we have $600,000 allocated, 2.1 million over the six-year time span. Two years ago, or really last year, the city council kind of switched up this particular process. It was originally a 50-50 program. It was just available to residential property owners. We've opened it up to commercial property owners and we've changed that percentage allocation. One of the questions that was curious from that was would we see more participation in the program as a result of that? And the answer, I think, at least over the last two years is yes. And so the direction that was provided, the way we have timed that program is we go out in the summer and then we, I'll get those assessments from everyone. We figure out who is into the program and then we budget for that allocated amount. So you can see this year, it has a higher amount because we had a higher level of participation. So it's $600,000 to do about five alleys in addition to that. So we have that in the budget.
Clay, what's the current proportion, cost share proportion?
I believe it's 75-25 for residential. So 75% city, 25% for the property owner. And then the commercial, I believe, is 50-50. Next is budgeting for the rehabilitation of Third and Fourth Street. So this project has been marching forward in, in the six-year plan for some time. And so this will be the year that it's scheduled to receive funding. So about $2.2 million for the city match or a $7.3 million federal grant. So in total, about, about $9.5 million project. So just for clarification, the scope of the project is from Telegraph to Harrison on both Third and Fourth. I know there's been some questions regarding timing and when we can see that. So Brian and his team are actually working through that. We're designing this particular project in-house. We're probably looking, the full point of this year will be design work and then hopefully probably early 2024, probably somewhere between January and March is currently where we're scheduled for a bid. We will let you know if that changes. One of the fun things of doing or working with federal grants is they have checkpoints along the way. And one of those things that could change that timeline is outside of city control. I'll give you just an example, is we could turn in a set of plans for their review. The next checkpoint in is, is what they call check plan. So they give you review comments. You change your set of plans and you give it back to them for comments. Historically, you know, we, we've run into it before where we will get review comments back from the state two days, two days prior to the next checkpoint in. So that doesn't allow us a lot of time to have questions, make changes, and you have to hit those checkpoints in order to keep your schedule on the board. Just giving you an idea that if that moves a little bit, it could be one of those. The reason we will keep you updated is, is that moves forward.
We anticipate this being more than a one-year project.
Yes, so we're, yes, we're probably thinking two plus years. We are currently working through, we're, we're pretty early in the stages here of what the staging will be like and, you know, what makes sense from a traffic flow perspective. So once we have that more set in stone, we'll, we'll keep you updated. Next is the two-way conversion project. So in fiscal year 24, we have $2 million set aside. It's from Marquette to River Drive and it follows the guidance that is, that was provided by the council early last year.
Assuming $2 million as a rounding up from the 1.7 million. Are we making adjustments because of other things like maybe the River Drive intersection? Where are we at on those?
Originally, the 1.7 million dollars did not include traffic signals at Main. However, following conversations from the council, that was more of a direction that was provided. So $2 million assumes those, those signals at Main Street.
Everything kosher, is our plans good? Because.
I would say right now, our, our contact with the DOT is, is they're waiting to see what the specific plans to comment on, but they have not given us any indication that our concept is, has any issue whatsoever.
I'm just curious, in the budget book, I didn't see the private contribution. Usually we put that in there, you know, like we did the street scape, being in the private contribution. I didn't see that, so.
So historically, we've actually built that, so the downtown partnership contribution into, or at least for this particular project, into the general obligation bond amount. So our total general obligation bond amount has gone up by 700,000. So if, if you would like, we can always include that as a private contribution. We can work with finance and see what that looks like.
It would be like a grant in a sense.
Yeah, well, if you look at like street scape, you know, you always list the private contribution. I'm just curious, this one didn't have it in there.
But if I understand right, that's 70,000 over 10 years. So we're going to be seeing that money come in over time, not during the construction.
Which is why we built that into the general obligation bond payment, because then that's a payment over time.
Are there any other stops? Now that you're changing name to, from a stop sign to a traffic signal, I can't remember exactly where all the stop signs were. Do we still have stop signs in this project?
Yes. So there are three locations and we can get you those.
Aren't they shown on the map here?
They are, yeah.
Okay.
Zigzaggy thing is.
The signal, yeah.
Right.
Stop sign is.
Got it.
So it's at Pershing, Ripley and Iowa. Okay.
Um, next is kind of projecting outward in fiscal year 25 with $100,000 set aside to start the design of the reconstruction of West Central Park from Lincoln to Paramount. And then the federal grant that has been secured of $2.6 million in fiscal year 2026 for a total of $2.8 million.
Continue to call me on it. I keep telling them it's in the budget.
I get calls on this one.
This is, this is the one I get the most on and I thank you for that.
And our last project that we were going to discuss for today is the traffic calming program. So in 2024, we have $150,000 set aside for across the six-year plan, 900,000. Brian and his team are going to bring before you a policy before implementation. So you should see that this winter. Current budget for this particular program is 75,000 based on conversations and feedback from the council. Wanted to see that increase, so it was doubled. So can you see the 150,000? So this is something you should look forward to seeing in the, in the coming months.
Does this include the indicators?
So this particular funding source could hold a number of traffic calming measures. So it could be speed homes, it could be indicators, it could be a whole host of things.
Perfect. Thanks.
Lighted stop sign at Vets and Thunder Bay. That's great, because I think that'll help a lot. I just have one more question. I, I've heard a rumor that we're going to have to increase the size of the parking lot at River Heritage Park to improve logistics with buses. Is that more than a rumor?
The two vendors have asked, but we refer them back to our original agreements, which they both executed. So lots of people ask you all for lots of things. It doesn't mean any activity is happening to move that forward.
Because I did watch the logistics for a couple of hours that one time they were including buses being over the railroad tracks parked.
The council that approved the agreement at the time was very clear about the infrastructure that was currently in place and those vendors understood that at that time.
I just want to say thank you. This, you know, I've been around a long time and this is probably one of colleagues is boring. I, I don't know, we get a lot of things done. Great job. Just continue the good work. And I want to apologize in advance to anybody who gets caught in the traffic jams this year, you know, the detours. But I'll, I'll be glad to feel the whole call.
I just say, just what Alderman Dunn said, first year doing Alderman, coming into this like wow. This year, Corey, your staff, Mallory, everybody, how you.
This year, Corey, your staff, Mallory, everybody, how you set this up, so much easier. Great job. Lot easier to understand.
I just want to clarify that boring is I like the word stable.
The, the key takeaway is debt load to borrowing limit is down, uh, fund balances are up across the, all of our funds. Levy rate, uh, is neutral and, you know, roughly a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars in improvements coming in city of Davenport. Uh, pretty incredible and more than a handful of community-changing investments. It's awesome, right? Boring, but awesome.
Say kind of what I said Tuesday, but, you know, um, Stable, good financial position and focus on our pillars. Same thing with CIP. Balance budget, majority of funding, street sewers, public safety things. Focused on, uh, redirecting and, and, uh, reducing our debt load. Huge, um, impacts there. Good cash balances in the service, debt service fund. Focus on our goals and operational pillars. And then listening to the constituents in the community sewer area that says do streets. I, I keep hearing the word historic. That's the one I'm going to use too. Historic project, the amount of projects we're doing, the amount of stuff that's going on, uh, that this council and, and the previous council and the staff have focused on, uh, to fund, um, and with a great fund balance, um, this, this is as good as, but, and except for my colleague here and maybe someone that's sitting in the audience. I, I haven't seen anything like this, uh, from last year to this year, the amount of work, the amount of, uh, things going on. And it used to be fix the dang gum streets. Um, what are you doing? Now it's, how many barricades do I have to go around? Right? So I appreciate those comments, but you're going to see barricade after barricade and you're going to see street after street being done. With a fund balance, with a balanced budget, with being in a good financial position, um, with reducing the debt load. And having our audit be good and having, we anticipate as we have the last few years, our audit aid, our, our bond agencies having a good report. We should, the citizens should be proud of this budget. Yes, there's some things, as, as, as the council alluded to here, that we need to adjust or to look at or reevaluate or get more information on. I, 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 uh, ask the staff to please be conscious of that as you always are. But this is a great budget. This is a great CIP and the amount of projects and, and things and streets that we're doing, you should be very proud of. And I thank everybody that's involved. Have a good weekend. Without a tax increase.